Evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening for the Cadillac Planning Commission meeting here for September 23rd, 2024. If anyone would be, join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Philkins, here. Host. Rice.
Here.
Bunce.
Here.
Blasher. Bauman.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Van Pelt.
Here.
Putman.
Here. Thank you. Start off, approval of agenda for again, September 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second it. Bauman, Fent.
Putman.
Yes.
Blasher. Bauman.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Host. Bunce.
Yes.
Approval of, we did not meet in August, so our last meeting was July 22nd, 2024. Approval of those meeting minutes.
Second.
Bauman.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Blasher. Putman.
Yes.
Host.
Well, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. It's probably everybody's here because we didn't order enough pizza. So, we're considering tonight, an amendment to the ordinance to regulate utility scale battery energy storage systems. This was as interesting to read as what I just did too. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Wallace. I don't know.
Yes, on this particular item, our attorney Laura Genovich is going to make a presentation on this particular item.
Okay.
Laura, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can't hear you right now. Yep, can you hear me okay?
Well, so-so.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? No? Danielle, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so yes, a very exciting ordinance amendment before you. Battery storage facilities were not something that we really thought about regulating until last year. New technology, and it came to the attention of municipalities because of a new law that's of last year, PA 20.
Oh, this is not gonna be.
Um, some will be asked.
Laura?
Ask her, she's gotta land.
Can you not hear me?
Yeah, we're coming in and out.
Oh no, alright, I'm so sorry. I will, um, I can just phone into the Zoom, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
She is digitalizing.
Is she calling or is she?
I think so.
Yeah, I love technology when it works, and when it doesn't work.
Good evening, Marcus.
That's huge.
It's big matters.
That's beside us.
Yeah, the utilities are supposed to build two.
While we're waiting for Laura, I, you know, I think the long and the short of this request is to be able to retain local control over issues regarding battery facilities versus losing that ability to the state. That's the reason why it's before you tonight for consideration. Local control issue.
When you say that in a nutshell, is this mostly solar panels? Mostly?
Don't, I don't know. I think it's regarding battery type facilities. It might be regarding battery facilities for solar generation plants, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
So, it was something that legal brought to our attention regarding, you know, potential loss of local control, and, you know, we certainly would like to be able to have our local appointed and elected boards dictate local policy versus the state.
We should probably need to hear from Laura, because I, I know that the, the act itself applies to solar and batteries. Essentially exclusionary zoning unless the municipality has an ordinance that complies with the statute, so this seems to, I only see batteries here, but I assume we want it broader than that if we can, so I'll be curious on her thoughts.
You wanna try calling her?
Oh, there she is.
There she is visually.
Sorry about that. I had also, in a, in a panic, asked another of my colleagues to jump in. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry about that. Alright, I'll, I'll start again. Batteries, and if you see Mallory Reader join, she's a my colleague in the municipal group who works on these as well. I asked her to jump on when I couldn't join on, and I think she just joined too. Mallory, you can stay on in case I drop off again, but battery storage facilities are a fairly new technology. We simply did not have them until the last couple of years. So really, no municipalities in Michigan had zoned for battery storage facilities until the last year. It also came to light because of PA 233 of 2023. That was a state law adopted last year that many would view as really taking away a lot of local zoning control over wind, solar, and these battery energy storage facilities. Basically says that the local zoning authority doesn't have any zoning control unless the municipality adopts what's considered a compatible renewable energy ordinance. And if the municipality's ordinance does not meet the requirements of that, then the developer can skip over local zoning altogether and go to the state Michigan Public Service Commission instead, skipping all levels of local control. So what's that, what that has prompted is for municipalities to adopt ordinances that regulate these in a way that is mindful of the requirements of PA 233. And PA 233 regulates very specific things like setbacks and noise limits, although it doesn't regulate everything related to these facilities. So a battery energy storage facility is not the same as the energy that's stored at a solar facility. Battery energy storage is a, can be a freestanding land use that, you know, stores energy as its name suggests. And there are particular, I would say hazards or unique issues to consider with battery storage, which is why you'll often see it in an industrial area. There's some risks with fire that we try to protect against in regulations because a fire at a battery energy storage facility is very difficult to extinguish. So what you have before you is an ordinance that regulates these battery energy facilities generally. And then toward the end, you'll also see where it addresses PA 233. And this part requires a little explaining. It seems a little complicated. But the gist is that PA 233 only applies to certain battery energy storage facilities. And for those facilities, we have to follow the state's requirements, which are fairly lax with regard to things like, like noise and, and things like that, and setbacks primarily. For facilities that are not covered by PA 233, we have the ability to be a bit more robust in our regulations. So the first part of the ordinance would apply, all of those parts, which you'll see different setbacks and noise requirements would apply to facilities that are not subject to PA 233. For those that are subject to PA 233, they're subject to the state's requirements that are listed toward the end of that draft ordinance there. And then if there are items that are not covered there, like application requirements, location, then those general parts of the ordinance apply to them. So, it's a lot to take in all at once, but the gist of why we're doing this now is that we want the city to have a compatible renewable energy ordinance. If you do have a battery energy storage developer come to town and want to put up a facility. Because without that, then there'll be no local zoning input at all, and they'll skip and go directly to the state.
Okay, let me ask her that same question. Laura, um, is there a reason that this only applies to batteries and not solar and wind?
So typically, solar and wind are going to require huge spans of, spans of land that the city frankly doesn't have. So we don't see large-scale utility scale wind and solar projects really being workable in the city. So the city certainly, you know, might want to consider, you know, some small-scale solar regulations for residential use, but that's not, that's not what PA 233 is about. And PA 233, and this ordinance in particular, it's more time-sensitive because the law takes effect at the end of November, so we wanna have an ordinance in place before that date.
So I have a question in that regard. When you talk about the city not having that span of land, what about the Terry D property? There's a lot of space out there.
I mean, with, with solar, with solar and wind farms, you're looking at 300 to 500 acres. I'm not sure how much land there is at Terry D, but I don't think it's that much, is it?
No, there is now, really because.
Oh, is there? Okay.
There's, there's about 650-ish.
Is there?
After they recently acquired property immediately to their south. That would though, would still require a rather robust process through the Joint Planning Commission. To be zoned if somebody was to come in. Yeah, and suck up all of that property for that particular use, because right now that property is, is divided by different uses, not just all for one, but.
Right.
I, I guess the question would be, Laura, you know, would it be simple to just add this evening after the planning commission goes through their process, perhaps, you know, language including solar and/or wind? I mean, is there a harm or foul in doing that?
It's gonna take a lot of work.
So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to add it, yeah, we couldn't add it to this draft because it's different enough that it would need separate notice. But I'll say, you know, the battery energy is sort of the easy low-hanging, you know, fruit where we know it's something that could come in, realistically could, you know, come into the city. And typically, you're gonna know if solar and wind developers have any interest in the city. They're not shy about making it known, and they're very aggressive frankly, and we deal with that a lot, especially in the southeast part of the state, in the thumb area, and then even up in some parts of the upper peninsula. But, you know, thus far, your area has not been a target of solar and wind. So we're not as concerned about it, and we don't see as much urgency. We can certainly do it, but I don't think you're gonna hit the PA 233 effective date and have somebody, you know, come to City Hall for the first time and say they wanna put in a utility scale, you know, wind or solar farm. So that's why we proposed this one for now, because this, I think, is a more realistic possibility, not that it will happen, but it doesn't take, you know, the huge amount of land, or, you know, you can kind of pop it really where, anywhere you want.
You'd, you'd need a lot of acres for solar, probably more than exists in Terry D. I mean, it's five acres at a minimum.
300 to 500 is with a pretty restrictive ordinance. I agree, most developers want much more than that.
A thousand is about the sweet spot.
Yeah, that's the bare minimum of what you would need for it to be operational.
Okay. Now, where do we go? Does anybody, I guess I can open the public hearing at this time? If anyone has any comments on what Laura has just given, or is everybody here for like the B and B gig is what I have in my own head is why everybody's here, so I'm just gonna spit it out there, but.
Just, could, could we have an example? I'm, I'm kinda in the dark here in what this actually is, this utility scale battery storage.
Rick, could you please come up and state your name and write, so that the people have.
Being in the audience, so I don't, I don't have all that going on, but.
Just so I can hear you.
Did you hear his question, Laura?
I did hear his question. So they sort of look like storage containers, honestly, is the best analogy I can make to what they look like. You can honestly probably Google images of what they look like to get an idea of it. So they're much smaller, you know, they only require, you know, maybe even a couple acres to put one on. And then, they, again, the, the big concern, other than maybe unsightliness, is that when there is a fire, it's very difficult to extinguish, so that's why it's important to have good fire protection standards like what we put in your draft ordinance.
And the predominant use for these?
It stores energy, frankly, I mean, it really does just store energy. I'm not an electrical engineer by any means, so my explanation might not sound very sophisticated, but it holds on to energy like a battery does, just on a larger scale.
And how is it utilized then?
So it's, the intention is that batteries will be needed to fill the gap when the wind isn't blowing and the sun isn't shining. So when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, you, you charge the batteries. And then when those things stop, and we no longer have fossil fuels, no matter what you think of fossil fuels, that's the plan of the state. Once those are gone, you won't have those to back up the grid.
So it's like a backup plan?
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Essentially backup batteries.
That makes it clear for me.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And, and they can be in communities that don't have any wind or solar. They're sort of divorced from those land uses.
So again, I'll open the public hearing on what we're talking about with this utility scale battery energy storage systems. If anyone has any comments or questions, please come forward. Okay. I have senior moments all the time, Rick, so.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, they're happening more often now.
Yes, they are.
The city of Cadillac, alright, this is for our backup plan, correct?
No, this is so that Cadillac can have control over the siting and zoning.
Okay, so these, these, who owns the battery storage?
Utility companies.
Utility companies own them. Okay, so we're gonna basically write an ordinance that governs how they incorporate these into our area.
Only if they want to.
Right, right, okay.
And we retain some control, as Laura described.
Yes, yeah, I get that.
The state put in preemptive zoning.
Yep.
But they still have to come back to us, I believe, to put them anywhere.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Especially once we pass the ordinance.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Hope you don't mind me asking, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else have any comments pertaining to what we're on right this second? Andy?
Yeah, Andy Van Alst. I, I don't really have a lot to say, uh, other than, you know, I know the wind companies were very helpful with the municipalities establishing ordinances to put them in. And why wouldn't they be? I mean, it's to their benefit. So I'd caution the city on taking advice from anybody but the city. Taking advice from the municipality that wants it, or the utility that wants it. Yeah, they'll help you, write it just the way they want, you know, so that's the only thing that I have to say.
As written by counsel, the should, Lauren, you can correct me, as written by you, this goes as far as we can go under the statute.
This is correct. This is drafted by our firm. This is not drafted by a utility. And it is the last part that is more restrictive has to be because that is the state requirement under PA 233. Or that is less restrictive, excuse me.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else have any other comments pertaining to this subject right now? Okay, if everybody's good on that, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this matter at this time. Joe, I'm looking to you.
Well, I, I think this makes a lot of sense, protecting as much control as Cadillac can have.
I'm on board.
I move the adoption of the proposed ordinance as suggested by staff and council.
I'll second it. Perfect.
Which, which option are you referring to?
Oh, well.
There's option one, two, and three here.
No, what was proposed is option three.
Three.
Yeah, okay.
I think you're right. So yes, as drafted in the commission packet.
Yep.
Ooh, second thought, sorry.
I did.
There it is, there's all of them.
Yes.
Van Pelt?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bauman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Host? Putman?
Yes.
Blasher? Fent?
Yes.
Wonderful. That was easy. Thank you, Joe.
I was hoping all these people were here.
Okay. Now we'll see if my hunch is right. So now, we're gonna consider an amendment to the ordinance that would redefine bed and breakfast and add bed and breakfast as a special land use permitted in RM1 and RM2 zone districts. You running with this, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, yeah. At one of our prior meetings, we discussed the fact that we had a interest in converting a property on Cass Street that's in a, I think an RM1 or RM2 district. That was formerly a bed and breakfast, to convert it back into a bed and breakfast. And we had discussed two options. One was to rezone the property into a TS1 or TS2, I forget which one allows it. Or the other option would, would be to keep the existing zoning but allow the bed and breakfast to be considered by special use permit. And at the time, the planning commission consensus was to add the, uh, bed and breakfast as a special use to be considered in the RM1 and RM2. It should be pointed out that the proposal is only to not allow them by right, but allow them by special use, and only in the multi, multiple family districts, which is the RM1 and the RM2. So it's not a given that any given project would be approved. It would still have the discretion of the planning commission for all the normal standards that are considered by the planning commission in approving any special land use. So there, it would not be a given that they're automatically approved, but it would allow a passageway for it to be approved if the planning commission thought the proposal was proper for that given site. So that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if you want me to walk through it. It, it defines bed and breakfast. That might be something worth reading. It says, "The definition of bed and breakfast contained in section 46-4 of the city's zoning ordinance is amended in its entirety to read as follows. Bed and breakfast means a single-family dwelling unit in which up to eight rooms are available for rent to transient tenants for fewer than 30 days, during which time the innkeeper resides in the dwelling unit. The term bed and breakfast is also known as a tourist home." That's a phrase that was retained from the existing ordinance. And they are allowed in one of the tourist service districts as well. So, basically, the, you can see the sections in my memo to you which outline that we're just simply adding the bed and breakfast to the list of uses that are allowed by special use in the RM1 and the RM2. So a pretty straight, pretty straightforward, uh, change. The only other thing we noticed, the attorney picked up that in one of the districts accessory buildings were listed and not in the other, so we're also adding accessory buildings, which is a customary use to be considered in either of the two districts, so that was more of a, more of a housekeeping issue. So, um, basically, what I was, if you were inclined to want to approve this, it would be to approve the submitted, the presented ordinance to amend sections 46-4, 46-186, and 46-216 of the code of ordinance city of Cadillac, Michigan, as presented with the following changes. And these are changes to the proposed ordinance. Under 46-186, special land use permitted, add a number eight, which would say accessory buildings in use is customarily incident to any of the special land uses in subsections one through seven of this section. And then under section 46-216, to add a new number eight, bed and breakfast, and a new, not number nine, accessory buildings in use is customarily incident to any of the special land uses in subsections one through eight of this section. So, my recommendation is pretty much with some relatively minor changes going with the ordinance that was prepared by the attorneys. And, uh, it's probably been consistent with where I thought we were, we're headed with this particular issue.
You had given us a, uh, share showing smaller communities that had this. I don't see this in here, but.
I had Jerry Adams do a little bit of research, um, to see what other communities were doing. And it shows that a number of communities are not only allowing it in their multifamily districts, but there's certain single-family districts as well. They're also somewhat common in historic districts as well, because they're partic, those homes are particularly suited to serve well as a bed and breakfast establishments. So it was there just to, I guess, give you a comfort that this isn't breaking new ground or doing something. It isn't somewhat, somewhat standard throughout the state.
I, I just, I, I noticed that normally the maximum for most of them, maximum consecutive stay days was 14, instead of 30?
Yeah, certainly that, that, that could be something that you could, um, propose changes in. The other one is the number of rooms. I see a lot of people cap it at three and five, and I think ours might be on the high side at eight. So I think that's another area where it might make some sense to potentially think of a different number.
Okay, good. Before I open public hearings, anybody have any questions for John? Everybody good? Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open public hearing on the bed and breakfast ordinance. If anyone would like to make any comments.
I'm still Andy, Andy Van Alst.
Good to know.
Yeah, so, you know, what are we doing here, right? This law of unintended consequences that Steve King talked about a couple of years ago when we started wading into the short-term rentals. We codified this. This group, the planning board, codified the meaning of John's memo that related to I got it here somewhere. Oh, here it is. Memo that John Wallace put out back in October of 2021. It said, "Short-term rentals shall include housing units being rented under various rental platforms, blah, blah, blah." And I'm going, but we didn't talk about, uh, partial use, but it says right here, "The rental housing units either within a home or including an entire home." So that says within a home. If it's a bed and breakfast, that's within a home. So it's already, we've already got a memo. We've already dealt with this. The memo, the codify, said, uh, that the partial home, the planning board codified it in, uh, November of last year of '23, city council. That was unanimous. Right? And then the city council codified it in December of '23. Everybody except for Steve King, who wasn't there. So everybody here and everybody there codified it, which says, "We agree that short-term rentals should be in TS1, TS2, B1, and B2 areas, period." And say, "Well, okay, well, maybe do some other stuff." Everybody there took you at, at your word that that's where we do it. We've got 200 people that signed petition. That was a simple thing to get these people to sign the petitions. It was almost effortless to say, and I, we stopped, we just, I figured nobody, not even one person should have to sign to say, "No short-term rentals in my neighborhood, not in my residential area, not to change the character of my neighborhood." So over 200 people and many, many other people have been against the short-term rentals in these, in these, in these residential areas. And you guys all agreed to it. You all, you all agreed to it. The planning board and the city council has already agreed to it. So we, if we know the areas that it's zoned, we also know the areas that it's not zoned. And it's not zoned in RM1. It's not zoned in RM2. So it's pretty simple. You go, "It's not really like breaking new ground, but where's another bed and breakfast in town? I don't know of one." So it's like, hmm, well, that kind of is like breaking new ground. And then we come back into enforcement. So if we do enforcement, we have, the city has sued three people that have had short-term rentals. Two of them are on Sunnyside, and one of them's on Pine Street. The one on Pine Street is real similar, right? It's just like this. It's like, it's one hundred block of Pine Street. This is three hundred block of Cass Street. The difference is, the one on Pine Street was partially zoned correctly for the use. This one is one hundred percent not. So they have, we denied, they were, the board has also denied having a boarding house up on the four hundred block of Chapin Street because it's, destroys the character of the neighborhood. So why would they do it on the three hundred block of Chapin? You know, I mean, I know that they had that before, but who's gonna enforce it? It, with the enforcement that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years has been no good, right? They finally are suing people, and you go, "Okay, that's good." But there's still, it's a citizen-driven method, so everybody's got a snitch on their neighbors. That's no good. It never should have been like that. They came out with new enforcement saying it's proactive. If it's proactive, I looked on the short-term rental sites today, and I saw three short-term rentals that are available in Cadillac. So why would we go, "Let's do more short-term rental in Cadillac," when you haven't even taken care of the existing issue with the enforcement? Why? Who's gonna, who's gonna monitor it?
Well, bed and breakfast is not being a short-term rental.
What is it?
Did you read the description of what it is?
Yeah, they're transit...
And that the owner, the owner will be there twenty-four seven?
Did you hear what I said? The rental housing units either within a home or including, or the entire home. So yes, I did. I understand what a bed and breakfast is.
Okay.
It's the same thing. It's short-term. What, are they staying there signing leases for over ninety days?
No, they're not.
Yeah, what are they then? It's a short-term rental, right? Right? Right?
I, I have to disagree. I don't know.
Right, and so...
Well, I think we should, I think we should continue with the public hearing. We can have discussion.
Part of the public hearing, right?
We can hear from the attorney as well.
Andy, I'm...
Though, Andy, there are still, whatever, there's still three short-term rentals that are listed right now. You could pull up your phone and find them.
Then give the information to the city. Right here's a report of what the city has been doing on blight and lawn and enforcement.
So...
If you want to read these?
I've got, I've got it. So that's why I was wondering. That's a good question, because I was wondering, who do you report it to? Because now they have this transparent reporting of the enforcement. So if I have an issue with the long grass or a car or a short-term rental or a dock, but you can't really just call and say, "I'd like to talk to the enforcement department," right? And that's what you're saying. So you've got the complaint form there that I have to get to the right hands. So that's why I'm saying is that the enforcement has moved forward. I'm not saying it's been negligent, right? They sued three people. You heard me say that, right? That's enforcement.
I did.
They sent out cease and desist orders. That worked.
Yes, sir.
But they aren't under control. It's still not under control. We talked about having proactive enforcement, not where the, not the snitch enforcement, not where the neighbors are telling on the neighbors, but where the city...
It is work in progress, and it is moving forwards. You do agree.
I, I am in partial agreement, yeah. I'm, I'm not saying you guys have...
Enforcement isn't gonna happen overnight, but yet enforcement is taking place. I get reports on it.
Yeah, right. So, but you, you know there are three that are out there, right?
No, I do not. Maybe the city does, but that's not what I'm here to discuss right this second.
Who's in charge of proactively policing the short-term rentals then? Do you have a form for that person? Who is that person?
Marcus, please.
Zoning Department.
There, there's your answer.
Right, so, so, so anyways, the, the, so here's the thing. You know, we're down here, we're down here arguing about what you guys have already promised, right? There's the short-term...
I'm not here to argue to them.
So the codification of a short-term rental. If you can show me how that's not a short-term rental, I'd be interested in hearing that. But they talked about the options instead of just zoning it because the special use permit lapsed, and they kept, stopped using it, and it went to, I think Andy said it, they turned it into rooms for rent. There were like fourteen people staying there renting rooms. And oh, okay, well, whatever. But they, they, it, most of the life of that house has not been, it was not built as a short, as a bed and breakfast. It was built as a single-family home. That's what I knew it as when I was growing up on Cass Street. So it's always been, hasn't always been. They lost the special use permit, so the, the one option that they came up with at the last zoning or the planning board meeting to avoid the spot zoning, which would be probably the most effective and best way to do it right now, because the plan B or the other two choices were change it to, change the zoning itself to T2. So it'd be by use or by right. And I'm like, "That sounds horrible. That's still spot zoning." But no, we'll change that whole block or something like that. And I'm like, "That's even worse." Then the alternate plan, the second option, was to add text to it to make it approved wording for all of that stuff. So by adding the text to it, you didn't just go, "We'll do it for this piece." Oh, no, "We'll do it for this block." "We'll do it for everybody in R M1." R M1, so as we're talking about R M1, it go to R M2. And it's one of the quotes from that meeting, I'll get to them. So it gets even worse. It goes from not just the one person that really wants it to the block that maybe knows, maybe doesn't know, to everybody in R1, but boom, everybody in R2 as well. That is not consistent with what they're saying. So in your promised accountability, so looking for, there's a third option. You could say no. That would probably be the easiest one. So you promised accountability. Andy said it was built as a bed and breakfast, and it's not. It was built as a family home, and the Feasters turned it into a bed and breakfast, and it probably worked good for them, and people stayed there and had their honeymoons and all that stuff and whatever. That's great. But as we were doing the planning, planning board meeting in June, Joe says, "How do you distinguish this from the issue that shall not be named?" And I'm like, "You know the answer to that, because it's, there's indistinguishable." That's, that's what the question was. And Mayor says, "Please don't advertise on VRBO sites, 'cause it's a short-term rental." So adding R M language is a huge ask. Do we have, I haven't seen a map of that. I would like to see if you're gonna do this. You go, "I know where, I know where the house is. I know where the block is." You have to put together a map of the R M1 and another map with the R M2. So, you know, and I'm curious if all the adjoining property owners that have property next to R M1 are aware of this, and then same thing with the R M2.
The notice was in the paper, because it is a public hearing. So yes, and I've asked if anyone else, other than you, I'll ask when you sit down, is anybody else here to speak about that, sir?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and you're, you're way over on time, but all these people don't mind sitting here, I don't.
To be fair about it, it wasn't all my time, because you were talking, you know?
Okay.
So what enforcement, flowchart person's gonna monitor this site? And the enforcement, yeah, I wonder, yeah, I, what I'm saying is, it'd be nice to have the people, the boards, the council, the city stand by their word to hang with T S1, T S2, B1, and B2. We've been over thirty years without having any problems with it until just recently. Now we seem to have problems that we can't get over. That's where I'm at. We'll see if anybody else agrees with me.
Thank you. Anyone else have any more comments on bed and breakfast?
Martin Dubravik, four oh six East Chapin. You know, I spoke a while back about the boarding house. We've spoken about lack of enforcement. We've spoken about short-term rentals. I live in this neighborhood. It's been over twenty-two years. That's never been anything other than a single-family home, number one. Number two, I'm, I'm sort of interested as to why we're changing the zoning, the character of the zoning. And one of the reasons there was such a gathering for the boarding house was because this historic neighborhood where we live is trying to rise up, and it's trying to be better. It's trying to improve. And there were major concerns with the boarding house, which would be the same concerns with this type of situation. I, I would say it's definitely a short-term rental. These people are coming for short-term, and they're either leasing, they're renting, they're paying a fee for a certain amount of space for a certain amount of days. To me, that's a short-term rental. We, the, the issue is, in this neighborhood, and we've been fighting this for over twenty years. I got my office in this neighborhood. I got my house in this neighborhood. And we're trying to make this neighborhood better. We're trying to encourage single families that come in, that restore these homes, that improve and enhance the community. And when we, we already have tons of rentals in this area. We have tons of rentals. A few years ago, John wanted to make a homeless shelter district in this area. Then we want to add a boarding house in this area. And, and we, we keep adding and piling on, it seems like, in this neighborhood for these homes that a lot of us have put a lot of money into. We'll never get that money out. It's okay. We enjoy it. We, we love being here. But you're not gonna attract people like us to come into this neighborhood if it's a commercial district. It's already hard enough with the rentals that are here. As far as enforcement is concerned, I think there's still questions of enforcement. Yeah, there has been more enforcement. I don't disagree with that, but I think it's been a reactionary enforcement. It's been reactionary because people have complained and keep complaining and keep complaining when they come here to these meetings. And, you know, I, I'd like to know if John or, or any of the city staff, have any of them talked to any of the property owners immediately around? Have, have they? You know, it'd be interesting to know if before this, this, this change in an ordinance, if we've actually talked to anybody who lives in the neighborhood. I, I found, I found out about it, about this. I didn't get a letter, a notice in the newspaper. A lot of people, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, don't read the newspaper. And it's word of mouth. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. Thankfully, some of the people here told me about it. But had someone knocked on my door or talked to my wife about, "Hey, we're, you know, the city's considering doing this. I'm from the city. What are your thoughts?" And, you know, we'd give them a few minutes of our time, and maybe there would be people in the neighborhood that are for it. But I think before we change the character of it, of these districts, we already have rentals. We've had, had to fight to keep homeless shelter, a homeless shelter district out of our, out of this neighborhood. We've had to fight to keep a boarding house out. I think if anything, we should be trying to enhance this historic neighborhood instead of just piling on with commercialism, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pat Ponzek. I've been here visiting with you guys before. A number of us have been here visiting with you before. We are the representative few. I can't tell you how difficult it is to get people to come here and speak in front of anybody. People don't like to do that. So if you see this many people, it's not that this, these are the only people who care about what we're talking about. They are the few who are willing to come up and be seen and be heard. They represent a lot of other people who have the same feelings. I used to live at four thirty-seven Cass Street for many years, and that was a wonderful neighborhood. My children, the neighbors' children, they all grew up. It was a free and wonderful place to live, and it was what I would like to see it keep on being. It's like whack-a-mole to come here to talk to planning commission or to the city people because you get, you stop having a independent little something here, and then it pops up here. You want to make special zoning here, there, elsewhere, without regard to what the people want, what the people who live in the neighborhood want. I don't know why you're so prone to help these sudden little individuals. And these people are not our people. They're not Cadillac people. Many of them aren't, some are, I suppose. But they're people who come from downstate. They buy something here. They rent it to downstate people who can afford. I can afford to stay somewhere for two thousand dollars for three nights. I can't live there for three nights, two thousand dollars every time. But they're making it so that people who live here, work here, can't. The people who are the schoolteachers, the nurses, the people who work at the gas stations, the people who work in, in the food industry here. And these people do not bring any business to our community. Or they might bring some. They bring most of the business to the people who own these short-term rental places. It's not to our enhancement. They don't bring their food. They don't buy their cars in our neighborhoods. They don't shop here. They don't buy their clothing. They don't go to our, well, they might go to our Walmart briefly. So I wish you would just give some consideration to what this community has been and what we want it to continue being. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Hi, I'm Andy Ulrich. I think I might be the guy who's stirring up all the trouble, intending to do that. Just know, I have a lot of respect for Dr. Dubravik and for some of the other folks that spoke. I purchased this property at three one two East Cass Street. It's kind of one of the more historic and stately homes of Cadillac, I think. It, it was remodeled and really designed now to be a bed and breakfast. It would take extensive remodeling to change that. It's got six bedrooms, seven bathrooms, two hot tubs, and a built-in wood sauna. The third floor is a honeymoon suite that has a hot tub in the middle of the room, own bathroom suite, and a spiral staircase that goes up to a fourth-floor loft that overlooks the lake. It's very nice. When I purchased it, it, it would have been used previously for a couple of decades as a bed and breakfast and was licensed as a bed and breakfast with the city. That expired, and the owner before that for, you know, maybe fifteen years or so had just used it as rentals, and it was pretty rundown. There's a pretty rough crowd in there. A lot of the neighbors complained about people drinking or drugs in that place. I was singing to the choir at the First Presbyterian Church, and we had someone walk over, inebriated from that place. It was pretty bad. So I bought it in January, and I put about seventy thousand dollars trying to restore it. It's got nice hardwood floors and a nice fireplace, that sort of thing. The intention would be, you know, to possibly have the option to use this license. I think that I've been trying to work with the city and be totally transparent about that, and really try to have it more like a bed and breakfast, kind of like Munson House in Traverse City, where people stay, let's say if they're having surgery for a family member or something. They could stay at something that would be more familiar and maybe more personable than just a Holiday Inn or something like that. Yeah, my intention would totally be to keep the historic character alive. I, I think there's kind of two discussions maybe between this property and maybe a wider kind of thing. At least what I was asking for, I just want to reassure the community, this is not an Airbnb, or it's very, very different than that. It would be, you know, a classy place where people could kind of have a refuge, maybe if they were staying, maybe at the hospital or other places in difficult times. About some of the enforcement thing, I do think the city council maybe last meeting passed a thing that said the city controller would have control to enforce these regulations so that wouldn't need to come to a vote, so they could maybe do that more quickly, which I think would probably be a good idea. But, yeah, my, at least in this property, my, you know, intention would be to keep definitely the historic nature. I'm on a, you know, I'm on the board of the Historical Society. I believe pretty deeply in that. And really, this is the true, I believe, the true best use for this property, and it was what it was before. The entire backyard is paved for parking. There are some people who might need a six-bedroom, seven-bathroom house with two hot tubs, but not many, probably. You'd have to have a pretty large family or something. So my intention would be to keep that historic nature, and I think to this council, even with this ordinance, would still have to approve it, you know, at a later time on a case-by-case basis. Specifically, this property also is on the same block where State Farm is there, so it's already kind of broken up. There's a, you know, commercial element already there, and Cortland Terrace is right across the street, which is multifamily, obviously. So at least that's what my intentions are. I don't know what that means for the larger political thing for the rest of the city, but... But at least, yeah, I'd just like to reassure people that this would be a classy and well-managed place with someone on site and very different than something that would be a traditional Airbnb or VRBO. It, it was this before and we're just hoping that might be the option of having that again. Thank you.
Do you know how long it was a bed and breakfast by chance?
A, yeah, a few decades. I don't know. I, I've run into some people that said, yeah, my intention is, you know, thinking about options to use it for that. And they're like, oh, yeah, I had my honeymoon there. I've had, actually, three different people say that. It was, it was kind of nice. And it's, it's, it's very nice. Yeah, but it's been a while since it was that before. And it was pretty dilapidated in some, in some respects. It also has one kitchen. And so if it was some sort of a rental thing, it would really have to be extensively remodeled for, for that. It's not really set up to be traditional rentals. And personally, I'm kind of opposed to that of, you know, kind of breaking up these stately homes into, you know, this hodgepodge that is somewhere, you know, in the area.
Thank you, Andy. Good evening, John.
Good evening, John. Sorry, 201 here, quick. Cadillac is a tourist destination. The planning board council should do all they can to attract and accommodate these tourists. It is so important for our economy. The courts loosened up the definition of family back in the eighties and people residing in a dwelling need not be related any longer. So we get all kinds of different definitions going on with residential dwellings. The number of people residing in a unit is not so important, but how they behave themselves is. And we've got lots of ordinances on parking and intoxication and trespass and noise and all those things. We just need to enforce those rules. And I think that's the complaint we're getting from people is the nuisance from these residences. We need all these various residences. And the city has the power to adopt rules and regulations all they want for a special land use. They could make it so restrictive that a guy couldn't even put one in. You know, there's all kinds of rules you could put on it. You know, a B and B is owner-occupied, but that doesn't include then our Verbo's, you know, and all these other types of rentals we've got. B and B's got to be owner-occupied. Well, that's not what the, we usually get. So that's the ones I stay at. I have a family union once a year across the country someplace and we rent a big house and we all stay in it. Well, that wouldn't be possible with a B and B because you'd have to have an owner, owner there. You know, Verbo's stand for vacation rentals by owner. Doesn't mean owner has to be there, though. There's about 2 million Verbo's in the country and 6 million B and Bs. So B and Bs are lots more common. And the type of ownership isn't that important. We had a rental ordinance come in, a rental housing ordinance come into effect when I was building inspector. And that was a big deal. We had a lot of complaints from rentals because they were parking wrong or too loud or didn't mow their grass or whatever. They just weren't normal folks like the rest of us owner-occupied houses. So we were upset with rentals. We can't. We've got to allow all these different kinds of ownerships, especially, I think, attracting tourists. We shouldn't find fault with them. They're helping you spend money. And I think that's important for us to keep our tourist designation things.
Thank you, John.
Lived here 42 years. I can't call it my house. Everybody reminds me it's a Clifford house. But we moved here, single family, families around. It was a wonderful neighborhood. And as Martin said, we started losing that and got nervous. But we've had young families buying houses, remodeling and doing it. I have never, I haven't been here in, I can't tell you how many years. And I've been here twice within six months. And I, I get nervous because I, I worry things are creeping into the neighborhood that are going to take away from the single families that we have there, that buy there because there are, that's what the neighborhood is. And it is a neighborhood. And it, and I don't want to say that it's like we're being attacked, but it just, I get nervous because it's like things are creeping into the neighborhood that, that when we move there and the young couples that are there, we never thought that this was something that we would have to come down and discuss and, and say why. We've got a beautiful, single-family neighborhood and I hate to see things creep in that will take it away. And as Martin said, he lives down the street, we've been working hard to build the neighborhood back up and it is. And we just see things that are creeping in that are going to take away from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Torres, resident here in Cadillac. You know, I heard it said once at one of the earlier meetings I was at, that it's nice to see all these people here. And you know what it is? Nice to see all these people here.
I agree.
Neighbors, other residents, citizens of our beautiful city. I also heard it said that normally these meetings don't have many people at them.
True.
I would look at that as a barometer. Absolutely. You don't have a lot of people here, that means you're doing things the way the residents of the community of Cadillac, they're happy with what you're doing. Makes sense. You get a crowd full of people here, you start wondering about a recommendation from John Wallace about this amendment to this ordinance. And you start asking yourself, wait a second. Haven't we been here before? We've been here before. Why are we going all over this again? I mean, I'm sorry you bought a home and this is the way the people of the city of Cadillac have asked our people on our commission, on our city council, to act in our behalf because that's what we want in our communities and our neighborhoods. We don't want next-door neighbors snitching on each other and then you got fights within neighborhoods because so-and-so's doing this. Heck, I got a new short-term rental around the corner from my house. And I'm not even sure if anything's been done about that yet. I, I just don't get it. This should not be something we're discussing right now because we've already made the decision on this. It's been made. It's been done. There should be no consideration of a recommendation, Mr. Wallace. And if somebody were to come to you as his position is, you might say, well, I can submit it. But it doesn't look like you're going to get it because the people have spoken in the city of Cadillac. It's what we want. As she said earlier, we're here because there's so many others. They don't want to come here and speak before y'all. They, they, when we went door to door, they said, no, I'm not saying nothing. Are you kidding? I'll have all kinds of grief from my neighbor. He'll find out I said something about him. And then what? It, it, it's, it's not something for you to consider at this time. We have already made the decisions on this issue and it should stand as that. I don't believe that this is going to help us. And as far as tourism goes, from what I understand, there's a big state park over there on the other side of the lake that brings thousands of people here every year. I'm glad to say I worked at that state park. I served this community as best as I could. And I will tell you this, those people come here to this town and they do spend money. I've seen them. And I can also tell you this, that every, just about every business owner in this town supported what we did at Mitchell State Park. Perhaps that's the reason why. They're a big draw. Not Airbnbs, Verbo's, bed and breakfast. Absolutely not. This issue should be moot tonight. And I urge the commission not to recommend an amendment to the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hey, I'm Mike Sands, 515 Stimson Street.
Hi, Mike.
And when you see the crowd fill up, you know why we're here. Anyway, you're all right, buddy. Don't forget that. Hey, you see the crowd filling up and I listen to the audience and I also listen to the people.
Perfect.
Okay. You know, I listened about the bed and breakfast. How many things that were listed is it could possibly help out? Is it for honeymooners? Could it possibly help out people at the hospital? I understand all that. But a defined reason should be the actual cause for the changes you use. Guys are trying to maybe explore. How's that? I'm losing a word here. But you know, the bottom line is this. If it is something to help folks at the hospital, then we should be with the hospital. Is it going to be a halfway house? Is it for somebody falling in hard times? What is it? A honeymoon suite? I get it, okay. The bottom line is, I don't understand what the real thing is going to be. And I really don't think the people in that area want it. That's why we're here. I mean, we're not all cheerleaders. We just say, hey, we've had enough and we want our single family. We like our residuals. Yeah, there's rentals. We get that. But people coming and going and stuff? No. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Doug Moore.
Hi, Doug.
2000 North Boulevard. First of all, I'll get down on my hands and knees and say, let's put this to rest, please. Don't make us keep doing this. Last call, I came up to my first city council meeting and I listened to the mayor. She asked, if you see this going on, would you please report it? Because we don't have the staff to do it. Do you remember saying that last, last October? Anyway, I have a, a short-term rental next to me. It was rented over Labor Day for three days. I sent in a request and I, I'm like Andy. I wish there was a phone number that I could call the city and say, can I talk to the code enforcement person and not have to go through the emails and send pictures and all this? So anyway, I sent it the first time and I didn't put my email in there to be, nothing happened. I didn't hear anything and that was okay because I didn't expect to. So the following weekend, here comes another couple in. And I know the people. They're fishermen. And I, I live next door to them. So I've, I've known them over the years as they've been coming into the, to the short-term rental. So this time I sent another request. About three days later, I got a email from John. Do you remember sending that to me, John? Doug Moore, North Boulevard?
I'm supposed to interact, am I correct? Pardon? It's not, it's not a question and answer.
You can't ask.
Well, I'll, I'll just phrase it, that I got a, a letter back from, from John saying that this case was closed, that it was rented for over 30 days. I live next door. I sent pictures to Mr. King. I sent some to him. I've got pictures of them coming and going, different groups. I guess this kind of falls back on what everybody else has been saying. The enforcement. If you can enforce a short-term rental, how in heaven's name are you going to do a bed and breakfast? I have a bed and breakfast. You have, you have a bed and breakfast and you're looking for it. Can I ask him a quick question? I used to sell real estate before I would ever sell.
I, I will give him an opportunity to respond.
Yes, I, I.
But that's all I can do.
But, I mean, I guess I would have checked with the city if it was okay to do that before I purchased it and, and put $70,000 into it. If, if I was going to do something like that, I would write in a clause in my purchase agreement, sub, subject to the city approval. But it's a Pandora's box. I'll, I'll give you a real brief message that my son used to take his family, key word there, used to take. Eight years ago, he started going down to Anna Marie Island. I'm sure probably all of us have been there. It's a great place to go. He started out $2,000 a week, pretty stiff. You know what it is now? $6,500 a week. So once you start this, it's just going to go. And it's going to go. And the enforcement is not here. I, I know you, you hired somebody supposedly to do this full-time. I put in two different requests for short-term rental violations. Never saw a single person. Nobody ever contacted me other than John with an email. And to that, I say, I'm sorry, John, you were lied to. So if this is what you guys think is going to happen, that it's just going to be one person and you're going to allow him because he's on a, a board or whatever, think about it. Because once you open this can of worms, it's just going to spread like a virus. So please, 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 think about it before you.
Thank you, Doug.
Anybody else here?
Yeah, I have something for you to say.
Please come forward, young lady. Okay. It's all good.
Carol Wolfgram. The only thing I want to say about this is it goes right back to everything that we've had thrown down our throat for the last year and a half is we are so short of housing. But yet we continue to put rentals out there so people don't have houses to buy. Think about it.
Steve Pivarsky. I live on North Boulevard. I'm one of the people who really does not like to do this, speak publicly. Last thing I want to do. But I'm, I live on the other side of the one that Doug lives on, a couple houses further down. I think he forgot about what happened around the Fourth of July. The same house, the same house. We, we heard some music starting up. My wife and I love music. We thought, it sounded good at first. Got on our boat and said, we'll go over there and put the boat in front of the place and listen to it. Well, after about 15 minutes, they got warmed up and started adding vocals. And the mu, the music was filthy. And I was so glad that my children, my grandchildren weren't there because it was terrible. And I would also speak, I don't remember your name, sir, and I do respect you, but I, about 20 years ago, I looked at houses up in that Stimson area. And I wanted to, to buy some big, big older homes that were about to be condemned. And I was going to make in multiple rentals out of it. And I found out what a hassle it was going to be. We were going to try and, you had to get your other neighbors to go along with it and all that. And I just gave up on it. And I think that, that should be, a person should check into these things before they spend the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Speaking of the Fourth of July party, I do want to address this and let you know.
Yes, sir, Doug.
I had my ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law up. And she's, she needs care, so my sister-in-law had went to Florida, so I had her up for three weeks at my place. I went over the first night at, she usually goes to bed about eight, eight-thirty. She's ninety-three years old. That's a pretty good day for her. So at ten o'clock, I went over, or no, it was ten fifteen. I said, hey, guys, can you knock off the sound? But you know, they had the garage doors open, and it was just awful. And what, and the owner's son-in-law came up and said, we got till eleven o'clock. I said, okay. So one of the other guys in the band heard it, and he said, hey, I don't want to have a ninety-three-year-old lady having a heart attack. So they knocked off. The next night, it was completely different. My son and I were down at the lake planting some wildflowers along the water. And all this vulgarity starts. And all this, it was all directed at me, because I had went over the night before. And I think because I have reported them before for short-term rentals. It's like Andy says, you start tattling on your neighbors, now we don't speak to each other. And so this got so vulgar, and I had all my grandkids up. I, you know, you say you have all these bedrooms? My wife and I live in a five-bedroom, three-bathroom home. I could do a killing on bed and breakfast. But you know why I have that? When all my kids and all my grandkids come up, we fill it up. So all these big homes up there will get filled up. They'll get filled up. They'll get filled up. Okay, I'm sorry. I won't turn around. But my point is, this was so vulgar, and all the neighbors were calling me saying, because we went, I finally took my kids out on the lake. We took the boat and got them out of there. And people were calling me, do you know what they're saying? And they were saying, the house to the east, they can suck... I mean, these are, they're all... This was all through the neighborhood. I mean, you could have heard it from Cheryl's Landing on down to Kenwood Park. It was blaring. And it was vulgar, unacceptable. And I didn't call the police, because I thought that's what they want me to do. They want me to call the police. And he just came over the other day. And I found out why, because they were having more short-term rentals coming up. And he was trying to buddy up to him. I said, Bob, don't even come talk to me, I have nothing to say. Oh, that guy, that kid, he was an asshole for doing this. And I said, no, Bob, you were for allowing it. Well, we weren't even here. And that's the point. These people aren't around. In this particular short-term rental, the owners live right next door to it. So for years, I allowed it, but I don't anymore. I'm going to turn them in every time. And whether Mr. Wallace believes them or not, I'll keep sending pictures. But I shouldn't have to do that, guys. I shouldn't have to do that. There's a time and a place for these properties, and it's not in a residential area. I mean, you're talking all these battery storage places. If there's places out there, they're going to build. As far as the hotels, my mom died up at Munson in Traverse City. When she was in the hospital for three days, we walked across the parking lot into a housing unit there. So if the hospitals want, they can furnish hospital rooms for people. My wife was down at Henry Ford last year for extensive back surgery. I slept in her room for eight days. So there's places that you can stay. You, I mean, I understand the lure of doing it, but I'm just saying, it's Pandora's box. Once you open it, you're not going to close it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Don Euler, 617 Goldback Street. I've never gotten up here and talked to anybody. I've been to many of these meetings. And for the last year and a half, two years, you know, we've been fighting with this. And like it's already been said, you know, we thought that there was an understanding. And I just want to make sure that you guys know. That there is that, yeah, well, please. That's why we're all here. Because we have been here, and we have seen things happen. And then something happens where all of a sudden, it's advised that we're going to go a different way. We're going to do an amendment. And why can't you just leave things the way that they're supposed to be? Why can't you just follow the ordinances? If there's an ordinance for somebody being loud, noisy, the cops are sent to it. Why is this so much different to not cover up the ordinances, all ordinances with the police? You know, this has gotten out of control. And I usually don't get up here and talk and stuff, but you know, you got to see all these people here. And it's not just these people, you know, these are all the people that vote everybody in to the other one, you know, the mayor and stuff. You guys are appointed.
We're still volunteers.
Well, volunteer, appointed, whatever. Because I don't know how she got on here, because in my eyes, she shouldn't be on this board. Because she goes to the other one. You guys bring everything from this board to the city council. But I just want you guys to know that, like you already know, the people of Cadillac love Cadillac. And that's why we want it to stay the way it is, and we don't want it to get any worse. But when things happen, and there's no recourse but to keep coming to these meetings and saying, come on, let's stick our stick to our guns. Let's do what is supposed to be done and follow through. And not have people, you know, coming up with loopholes and stuff to try to get in, somebody else into some spot. That's all I got. Thank you for listening. I know you guys, you guys are only doing your job and trying to look at, you know, different areas. You have to look at it, you have to talk, you have to look, read the paper. You know, we didn't get the paper, we just got a piece of paper that said that we could amend it. You guys have got what the amendment actually is. You know, we don't get to look at that where we should be able to.
I think it's on the city's website, Don, just for info.
Very good. I just wanted to get up here and make sure that...
Help guide you.
Sure. Well, sometimes I don't need the guidance. Sometimes I need people to do what the people want them to do.
That's why we hold these.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Don. Good evening.
Good evening. This is not what I want to, this is not what I come up here for. I, my son-in-law, daughter, and I own and place at thirteen oh five Sunnyside.
You state your name.
Cindy Helms. And I live in St. Johns, Michigan, so it took me two hours to get up here with all the construction stuff. And then I got to go back home, it'll take me another two hours. But I didn't want to miss this meeting, because it is regarding, well, the bed and breakfast were short-term. Okay, last year was a year from hell. We had short-term on both sides of us. The one lady give up, sold her house. The other guy, he was sued. Thank you, John. Thank you, Marcus. Because he, yeah, he's renting right now, but I think it's long-term. I don't think it's short-term. But this summer, last summer, I regret it. Every time I come up north, I thought, what kind of a crap show are we going to see next door? And it was, like you said, the vulgar language, the music. It was a party every weekend, and it wasn't our party. So I just want to say thank you, guys, for that. Just, you know, you got to get rid of the short-term rentals, like my son-in-law said. There's, what'd he say, nothing like a part, nothing like a party to rental, rentaling or something. He's a college student, so he knows all about partying and rentals. Yeah, it's all about a party. So just, you know, keep an eye on the short-term rentals. Don't let them come into residential families' homes and stuff, you know. There are a lot of hotels, motels, state parks, small cabins, all around Cadillac. They don't need to come into the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Every time I walk through that door, I say, don't open your big mouth. What a terrible time to open a bed and breakfast. I mean, short-term rentals, if it wasn't for short-term rentals, a bed and breakfast would be a no-brainer. I mean, okay, but they've intersected the two. And it's a tough time to start a bed and breakfast, my friend. But there is one comment that Andy made that I found disconcerting, maybe he can answer it, which is during his comments, he said that maybe this place could be, for someone on hard times, a place to land or stay. That, to me, sounds like a halfway house. And I'm not saying, I don't know, Andy, but, you know, it was an unusual statement out of his entire comment. And kind of clouded it a little bit, but if it wasn't for short-term rentals, bed and breakfast is no big deal. But it is now. I'm glad I'm not sitting in those chairs. Thank you.
Any other input?
I got something to add.
If nobody minds staying here, I guess, whatever.
We do what we have to do.
Rick Torres, resident city Cadillac over in that Segal Place. I will confirm his assessment of what he heard, what was said about him. Probably many other people would hear, including my neighbor Steve there. That was not a good night. That's not even acceptable behavior. And for the owner to say he wasn't there, he didn't know what was going on, you know, that's not an excuse. It isn't. And you're saying with these bed and breakfasts, that the owner would live on-premise, would always be there. There's no guarantee of that. You and I both know that. We all have things we have to do, and we do them when we have to do them. We are discussing an issue that we've discussed for almost two years now, a little over two years, actually. And we shouldn't be. Don't we have bigger fish to fry? Wow, as I look at Lake Cadillac and see what's happening to our beautiful Lake Cadillac, and I saw it coming back in the day when I was patrolling Mitchell State Park, between the zebra mussels and the milfoil, the swimmer's itch. Now we got algae blooms. Wow. I'm thinking, we need to start focusing. You want people to keep coming here? It's not the bed and breakfast, it's not the short-term rentals. It's maybe not even Mitchell State Park. If you don't have a lake for these people to use that's safe to use, safe to consume, not the way it is now. We're losing a very important jewel in our community. You're going to start losing the other diamonds in the rough that are your residents. We got to focus on what matters in this town. And to me, having lived with it, nurtured it, the Heritage Nature Trail, was in charge of that for many years. These are things that people come here for. They don't come here for bed and breakfast, short-term rentals. They come here for what we have to offer them, and our natural beauty, our trails, our lakes, our rivers, our fishing, our camping, our hiking. I think we need to refocus. I think the commission needs to refocus on what matters to our city. Our mayor and the city council need to look at that as a very serious component for our future. Or guess what? We will all suffer for it. I can guarantee you that. This issue is nothing compared to that. Let's stand by the decisions we make, and let's move forward with things that matter. Things that are important to all of us that live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Andy again. Well, I heard them, I heard them, and it sounded like they were in agreement with what I was saying. So, I mean, I heard a couple people that weren't in agreement, which, you know, I get that, too. I think Andy's timing, I don't know him, but he seems like a decent guy. I think his timing is incredibly horrible. But the one, the one short-term rental that this board passed out there on Sunnyside behind the gas station, they're now using that as a long-term rental. So maybe he can work a deal out there, and that'd be an appropriate spot for a bed and breakfast, so. I stand with the two hundred people that signed the petition. I can, these are available, they're on, they were submitted last year.
Anybody have anything else new to add? Because at this time, I'm going to close this public hearing. And I thank you, everyone, for your comments, really do. We appreciate it when everybody comes out, so we don't have to guess. So at this time, public hearing is closed. Well, board.
Mr. Chair, this is Laura Janovich. I had a couple of comments, if I might offer them before the planning commission begins its deliberation.
Please, Laura.
Sure. Well, and certainly, I'm very well aware, as everyone is, how short-term rentals have been a big issue in the city over the last year to year and a half. What I wanted to point out for the planning commission is the distinction between the short-term rentals and the bed and breakfast use as defined in this draft ordinance. In a couple of respects. One being that for a bed and breakfast, the owner does need to reside on premises. And people can have different opinions about the impact that makes, but certainly, in the short-term rental situations that we dealt with through lawsuits over the last year, the owner certainly was not, was not living there, right? It's an Airbnb. The owners were either in another state or certainly not on the property when these issues arose. So an important distinction is that the owner of a bed and breakfast must reside there. The other important point is that these would only be permitted as a special land use, meaning that each use of this, each property used for this, would have to go through the special land use process, including a public hearing before this planning commission, where this planning commission could impose conditions unique to that property on that use. So looking at a specific address, who the neighbors are, those neighbors would receive mail notice of that special use request and an opportunity to be heard on a particular property being used for a bed and breakfast. The conditions that this planning commission could impose might include everything from traffic to noise to lighting to all kinds of other things to protect adjacent land uses. And it's worth noting, these are not being proposed in the, you know, like R1 or single-family district. These are being proposed in the RM where there already are more intense land uses. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I didn't want there to be a perception in the public or otherwise that this was an amendment to just allow a blanket approval for short-term rentals. It is a different land use and does require going through the special land use process.
Awesome. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, board. So that spelled it out, did what I had in my own head. Nobody wanted to listen to. So, any thoughts? Any questions? Joe's mind is moving, I can tell, but I'm not going to be first. Nope, don't think so.
Maybe I would ask John and staff if there's anything additional that you would like to share with us based on everything we've heard so far, that maybe you can clarify better?
Well, I certainly understand trying to correlate it to short-term rental.
Well, I certainly understand trying to correlate it to short-term rentals. There's obviously some overlap, but historically, bed and breakfasts have been a standard use in zoning ordinances, well, ever since I've been in the business for 45 years, long before short-term rentals even became an issue. So, they, they were a, a use that was recognized separate from short-term rental. And as we tried to portray in some of the material that was put in your packet, it's not unusual to see communities allowing this in single-family districts. We obviously chose, because of the sensitivity we've been hearing for the last year or so, to not propose it in, in single-family districts, but in multifamily districts, where you already have more intense use, which Laura referred to, and also much more transient uses coming into and out of those properties. So, that's, that's the reason why it was proposed for that district. You know, if, if the, if there, if people do not like the current zoning, certainly, they can suggest that we go in and amend the ordinances to change zoning if they, if, if... But, you know, the zoning has been in place, and people have made decisions with the zoning for a long period of time. And, you know, it is what it is, I guess. It's been in place for, well, I don't think we've changed hardly any, hardly any zoning in the time I've been here, maybe a handful of parcels. And, and other than that, the zonings remain the same. It's probably been the same for 20 or more years. Maybe, maybe a lot longer than that. So, I guess it calls into question, when we do, do the master plan and when we do the zoning ordinance, does the public still have faith in what the, the planning and the zoning that was done before? If they don't, then certainly it's time to perhaps look at changing the zoning districts for different areas, if, if they're not happy with there being certain areas of single-family that are currently zoned for multiple-family. We don't, if you look on your zoning maps, we, which are in front of you, we don't have an extraordinary amount of property zoned for multiple-family use in the community. And that's going to be a problem going forward because all the housing that's gonna have to be built to accommodate the demand in the city is gonna have to more than likely be satisfied in multiple-family development. And so, we're probably gonna be looking at a lot of properties that people will propose for rezoning into multiple-family. And that's because that's gonna be one of the only ways that we can start to address the housing crisis. So, there's that issue as well. So, you know, there's a lot of things here at issue, but I did wanna comment into fact that bed and breakfasts historically were not viewed as, you know, hand-in-glove the same thing as a, as a short-term rental.
John, let me just jump in and add a couple of quick things, if I may. And Laura, I'm assuming you're still there. If I misspeak, please feel free to correct me.
Yep. I'm here.
So, just another, in a sense, quick reminder back to the Planning Commission, you know, before this evolved to where you are this evening with the public hearing, this item was brought before you in an informal way to, to open up that conversation, to get guidance from the Planning Commission on, you know, how best to, to look at exploring the requests that came forward. And, you know, I, I'm, by no means am trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but it was sort of my perception, and based on Planning Commission's prior discussion, that going this route of establishing the amendment to the ordinance that would create a special land use permitting process that essentially keeps the authority within the Planning Commission's, you know, proxy, I guess. You guys are the ones that ultimately would be approving special land use permits versus doing a complete zoning change and allowing it by right, was why we're here tonight, so that you aren't somehow opening up Pandora's Box, but rather, you're giving yourselves the tools to be able to evaluate and analyze these types of requests on a case-by-case basis. Right now, I'm only aware of one request that's in. It doesn't mean that we may not have others that come forward, but assuming that they meet the conditions set forward in the code, again, this would require the Planning Commission to have that discussion, have that analysis, have that public hearing, send out the, the letters to all of the, you know, to the adjacent properties within whatever is statutorily required, whatever that area is, to be able to process it. Certainly, conversation tonight from the public that was brought forward regarding enforcement and concerns about issues that are happening out there, I think it's important that everybody understands that regardless of what the nature is of a property that's next door to you, across the street from you, or a property that you're perhaps just walking past, if there's an issue occurring there that is, one, disturbing the peace, or, you know, however you want to characterize it, you, you, you know, call the police. And if it's not something that you feel comfortable calling 911 on, there is a non-emergency number, which is 231-779-9211. You know, the, who's living there, whether it's long-term, short-term, medium-term, however you want, I, forget it. If there's an issue happening, there's an issue happening. Call, call the police. That's, that is what they're there for. If, if we determine that whatever the problem is, is, is not like a disturbing the peace issue, or, and it's something that is, is on the zoning side of things, and we ultimately need to get different enforcement folks out there, then, then we will. Then we'll square that away. But if there's something out there that's causing an issue, call the police. You can call 911, or you can call non-emergency. Those are the two numbers. The other comment I heard, too, that was interesting, and when I first came to town, it was also interesting about having the mayor being an active voting member of the Planning Commission. It was something I looked up as well. It is actually required by our city charter. Not, not our city code, but it's a, it's an actual charter requirement. And so, that's, that's why you do find our mayor sitting on this body. I'm sure there's something else you might like to do on any given Monday night, but that is a, that is a charter requirement. So, I just thought I would try to clear it here.
Happy to serve.
What'd you say?
Happy to serve.
Yes, exactly. So, part of, part of the, part of the job, yep.
Is it possible to ask a question in response to what Laura said?
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is it possible to ask a question in regard to what Laura said?
It can be posed to staff, sure. Pose a question to staff. Come forward, though, so you're not sitting in your seat. It's too hard to hear in this room, is all.
Girl woke up again. I was just, so she said that when a bed and breakfast comes in, they have all this ordinance that they have to go through and all these forms they have to fill out and all this. Why don't short-term rentals have to do that?
Because those are unlicensed, unregulated. In this case, in this case, this would be, if approved in a special land use permit, would be licensed and regulated. Completely different.
Short-term rentals are the same.
Well, then, then we'd have to include it in the city code, and Andy won't let us do that.
Of course not.
Somebody needs to regulate it. We can't, obviously.
Why don't you close it? Close it.
If you close, it's embarrassing.
Yes, I'm done. We're, we're done with public, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm at a loss to tell you the truth.
Well, and so am I, just because of the turnout, but yet, but yet, based on the description of this, and he is going about this the correct way, so this tears me apart because I'm...
So, I, I, I look to Joe, and I would like your thoughts, because you can say it so succinctly.
Well, I can't believe I volunteered for this.
So, regardless of, of what the commission thinks, and you can all disagree, that's fine, and that's, I, I... This is a tough one. This is a terrible time to want to start a bed and breakfast. That is the best comment of the night. To me, the RM1 and RM2 have much heavier uses, including group shelters, family shelters, combination group and family shelters, recreational activities, multifamily, and in that case, it's by right. In this case, we're talking about a, it's an awfully complicated phrase, a false syllogism. Just because it's short-term and a rental doesn't make it a short-term rental. And that's the struggle. That's the PR problem here. That's the marketing issue. That's why all of you are here. And that's the point of the question you asked, which I think is a great and important one. The problem with short-term rentals as we know them in capitalized sense is that they are unregulated, unallowed, not, they are prohibited, and they need to be stopped through enforcement. What we're talking about here is developing a special land use option for an area that is zoned for heavier uses. And if approved, they would be subject to significant conditions, which could be a lot deeper than what we see in zoning. We could be, we could just decide that one is enough, or zero is enough. Zero, or whatever fits the community, to me, is what is better about this. And as noted earlier, bed and breakfast is actually, when done right, could be a lovely piece for the community. And even, I'm sorry, that's not a...
No, dumb.
Just tell me how you're gonna enforce it.
So, that's what I have to say, and...
Thank you.
That guy right back there. If he's living there, he enforces it. You guys?
Okay, so, was there a, so what were the recommendations?
By the word of the, what he's doing, it's, everybody's mixed this with short-term. It's not short-term.
No.
No.
Technically, it is because it's for a couple of days, but it's not two weeks or a week.
They're gonna come up and get drunk and get hammered, you know, like a single dwelling, family dwelling, where they...
In my own perception of the whole idea of the bed and breakfast, it is much more controlled.
Hundred percent controlled.
More acceptable how it's run, who's there, what it's set up. And I see it separate than short-term rental.
Totally separate.
Just what Laura said.
Yep.
That's my own feeling about, my perception of what a bed and breakfast is.
And it is regulated with a special use. I agree, I agree with Joe a hundred percent.
Well...
And this guy's jumping hoops. He's just not doing anything behind everybody's back.
I'll be the one to move the ball, and you guys can all vote no if you like. I'm gonna make a motion that the proposed ordinance amendment be adopted with the following change, that for fewer than 15 days as opposed to 30, all other requirements, including a special land use permit, would continue to be required for a bed and breakfast in the RM1 and RM2 district.
Seconded.
Osher. Buns.
Again, please.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Buns?
Yes.
Funt.
No.
Ruppin.
Yes.
Vanholt.
Yes.
Post. Rice.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
And the reason I voted no, all these people.
We'll give everyone time to leave, because we still have more to go over. Thank you.
Manufacturing. And I'm saying, you know, guys, if somebody says we can't do this...
I'm gonna teeter-totter with you, Kevin, just because of this turnout, but yet, they were misinterpreting everything.
But that's true.
We're confusing short-term rental.
It's not.
You know, the downside is, is that poor booger right there is gonna live with this.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I was...
Scott, is it right to Andy? Is that his name?
Yeah.
He's gonna live with this. So, he's gonna have to prove to these people that he's gonna have to be there. He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to look after it and police it.
A lot of, a lot of what we heard tonight in that public discussion didn't have anything to do with...
Absolutely not.
No.
But you, I can't remember who was mayor, when they tried to do that low-income down at the end of the season, remember? The low-income down at the end of the season?
Verbal junk down...
Oh.
Hey, that's where I live. Come on, quit it.
No, that's where you work.
Oh, yeah. Well, I live there.
Yeah, let's move on. Dean, how are you?
I almost moved to amend the agenda to put communications earlier for you.
Okay. New business. Thank God we don't have any. Old business don't have any. Board member comments. I'm, I'm heading someplace later. Anyway, communications, Pollard Street Development.
Yes, we have been working with Schmidt Investments for probably a year, year and a half. I know Dean just recently has been more involved with Schmidt Investments, but they've been looking at options for how they can, they were looking at acquiring a few parcels, and they were looking at how they could develop those parcels. Their primary interest was in creating duplexes. This is another interesting case because part of the property is zoned multi, multiple-family, and part of it is zoned a single-family. And I thought, since they did not want to go into a high-density apartment building for this property and only wanted to do duplexes, I thought it was reasonable to look at a residential PUD request that would allow for the duplex units to be on these parcels. Of course, I think Dean will address some of the options of how the ownership and management... This is kind of almost pre-skinch plan. If, if we get a kind of a, a positive sense of going, moving forward, their next step would be to, to bring forward a sketch plan. And then, they might even bring forward possibly, depending on what the attorney opinion is, if they can do sketch plan and final site plan simultaneously, we might even look at that. But I wanted to get a sense from the Planning Commission if, if the approach that we're looking at is to do the RPUD as opposed to looking at rezoning for the property, which would allow even more intense use of the property. So, that's kind of where we're at, and I'll turn it over to Dean, and he can talk a little bit about his design and...
Do you have those on the projection?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Dean D. Krieger with the DK Design Group. I thank you for your time tonight. I'll try not to keep you too much longer. As John said, we're kind of looking at this as a, a pre-skinch site plan even, primarily because your zoning, even for a sketch site plan, we have to have full topo work. We have to have that worked out. The owner, the developer, his name is Norm Schmidt, Schmidt Development, and he, he wanted to kind of make sure we were on a plan of attack that made sense before he spent a lot more money developing it one way. And that's, with an RPUD, your, your system is good, except you have to spend a lot of money to get to a point where, you know, if it even works. So, that's kind of what we're asking here, is, I know you can't vote on anything, but we're trying to get a little bit of feedback. This parcel is smaller. It's not five acres, so that would be a special condition under an RPUD anyway, but...
What size is it, Dean?
It is about an acre and a half-ish.
Yeah, but we have until, I think, next April, if they can bring the plans in, that the Planning Commission has the ability to work, work with a smaller site.
The intent here is, the reason that we're looking at duplexes is to keep more in scale with the neighborhood. We did have a conceptual look for the buildings that I had shown also, which, which you probably saw something like this, just to give some idea of scale. And again, this is a, a smaller parcel. There are some hoops that have to go through. There will need to be some work done as far as vacating some of the right-of-way because Pollard Street comes in and stops, and then what we'd have to do is create an adjusted right-of-way for a cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac I showed there is 75 feet in diameter that has been coordinated with the city engineer, that that is a size that is avail, or that is doable. I've also spoken with the fire department and gotten agreement that this type of layout would not be a problem to them. The, I'm just trying to do broad strokes to get to a point where we say, "Does the concept work?" Because if it does, we need to put a whole bunch of money into doing, you know, storm drainage and topo and surveys... doing, you know, storm drainage and type topo and surveys and all that kind of work. So, that's what we're asking, is whether a concept like this seems logical. If it doesn't, then we need to know that too.
I think it's an amazing concept, and it would be a wonderful addition to that area.
Why wouldn't it work? Why would, why will fifty people be in this room?
Well, what happens obviously with an R-PUD is you, you have to have some variation on setbacks. That, that's the question is, will the people immediately adjacent to the south say, well, those setbacks are smaller than are required by code? Obviously, with an R-PUD, I, I don't have to meet those. That's, that's the point of it. Again, we were trying to be as sensitive as we can to the area. This is an incredible walkable spot. I mean, you can walk immediately to the White Pine Trail. There is gonna be question that the developer's gonna have to work out with the city as far as Pollard Street from our development, actually east. I mean, that's a gravel road. How that works, who's responsible, does it stay gravel, getting the utilities, those are things that have to be worked out. I'm not saying that that's resolved here, but it can be. It's just a matter of, does the concept make sense as, from a Planning Commission point of view? Or are we wasting our time?
Well, the other homes on Pollard Street are duplexes, correct?
They, I don't know that. I don't know that answer.
There, there are, there are a few.
I, I believe it, and I know most, the homes.
They're rant-style, and man, they're huge.
The, the, the homes that are on the properties to the south of this are way at the south end of those lots. I mean, they're up on Sunnyside, so they're, there are houses on the backs of those lots anyway, but it's, you know.
They're right up on Granite Street.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, Granite, Sunnyside.
Yeah, they're, you said duplexes on granite, is that?
No, the duplexes are on Pollard.
On Pollard.
And they're like, they look like ranch homes, right?
Agreed.
But they're, they're duplexes, they're cut in half.
I honestly haven't looked at those closely, so, all right, yeah.
So, there's duplexes already there.
But they're.
Well, and again, the, there is, did you happen to put in the, the zoning ones that I sent today? There you go. That shows the current zoning. So, half of these would be in RM two already. It'd be the two that are farther west that would be in the R two.
Never R.
Yeah, R two.
I'm sorry? They get a bad joke, sorry. Keep going.
Stick with us.
I didn't hear what you said, so I guess it doesn't matter. So, and again, even looking at the verbiage in the R-PUD, the, this size of unit fits under the number of units it can have. I mean, it says that you have to take the allowable lot size and you divide back to get, I can, even in the R two, I could put those two lots on there if I needed to.
Dean, if I, if I may just quickly jump in, you know, for some additional context for the Planning Commission, using this tool, the tool being the R-PUD, is, is something that we have used several times in the past. Perhaps one of the biggest, largest future development sites that this was applied to was the Cadillac Junction or Terry D. site. Cadillac Lofts, I believe, also has an R-PUD, is that right?
Well, they're, that's mixed-use PUD, but it's the same, same kind, same kinds of.
And, you know, it, it, one of the, you know, the, the primary reason why, why we go down this path is because, you know, your, your current code on the books, like it, love it, hate it, you know, is set the way it's set. This is a tool that allows you to have flexibility looking at specific projects to be able to, to make them happen. And so, you know, without being able to utilize this tool, we wouldn't have the, the type of, you know, housing, specifically housing and mixed-use developments that we, that we have and that we're talking about.
And you would be able to, for instance, require some south property line tree plantings or something as an offsetting value to more limited setbacks, so that these units would be a little more screened from the homes that are, are to the south of this public development.
Right, they're gonna be looking down at them, right?
Well, there's a lot of trees.
Yeah, there, there is, right. There's a grade difference. It, it drops as you go north.
Right.
When I went by there, there seemed to be a whole bunch of moisture on this property.
That's right.
There, uh, on the very north part, there could be some, yeah. There's a fair amount of, that site's gonna have to be leveled a lot. I mean, there's a fair amount of this going on, so.
Right, couldn't tell that by driving down.
Yeah, yep. But I do believe that we can keep all of our stormwater on site. I don't think that's a problem at all. I, I mean, obviously, we'll have to tie into water and sewer down Pollard. As I said, the fire department, we don't have issues that way. I, again, this feedback is just what I'm asking for. I'm just trying to, I, I know that we're not voting on it. I can't hold but, if, if we looked at this and the, as the commission as a whole, you said this is a terrible idea, then we would know that. But otherwise, I can use this to push the developer to go ahead and put some more money into the survey and get the topo going.
How much closer than the setbacks would this be?
Well, the, the duplex farthest to the west is the closest, and that's got about eight feet of setback, which if, in an R two, technically, I could go eight-foot side yard on one and ten on the other, but if that becomes the backyard, then it's gotta be like thirty. So, it, it gets tight, and.
Yeah, it does.
Part of that is because I have to get vehi- vehicular access into these. They each have garages. So.
You can't turn that one to, not redoing your site plan, but that one can be turned to look northeast, could it?
It, it doesn't work. I don't, honestly, I don't get a lot more setback.
Oh, is that right?
I mean, it, it kind of rotates right where it sits.
Yeah.
So.
And this layout too, when, in the wintertime, with the housing units oriented this way, there will probably be some slight light views. They won't be real great views, but some, some water views with this orientation of the housing units.
Uh, the other thing is, the developer is intending to sell these as duplexes, I mean, as, as condo duplexes, so no short-term rental or anything involved with these, but.
Where did you get that word?
Throw that out there.
I don't even know why that would be on your mind.
I don't know. But yeah, that is the intent, and whether it's one association and each of the condos are sold, or whether they're site condos, that's something he's gonna have to work out. I don't know for sure how he wants to do that legally yet.
The question that always gets asked, why here? Why not in all of the grand acres and acres that exist elsewhere?
Because this is a perfect walkable site, and we need housing. And honestly, these units, you'll probably be able to sell. These will be small three-bedroom units that will have a garage, a single-stall garage, and they'll probably sell in the three-sixty to three-seventy range, I would think, which is prime around here. I think you'd be. I just think, and you'd be able to, you'll be able to walk immediately to the White Pine Trail right downtown. I mean, that's just a great site.
A lot of rentals on granite, you said?
Yeah, that end of the granite.
Yeah, the secondary issues you always hear, are you changing the, the feel of the neighborhood and the.
Yeah.
Probably feel better. We're upgrading it.
I didn't say my question wasn't leading.
But like Carla said, there are duplexes on the other side of whatever street that is.
You said it on Pollard?
Pollard, you said that.
So, it is in character with the neighborhood.
Well, the concept of duplexes, but this is.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not gonna be rentals, they're gonna sell them.
Correct.
That takes that right out of the equation.
And this is the sort of thing that R-PUD was intended to permit?
Yes.
Yes, and as John said, while we've got this window of opportunity to do it for less than five acres is now would be the time to do it, right? Because that will change again.
Yes, potentially, yes. Laura, are you still there? Laura? Are you there, Laura?
Uh-uh, didn't she think we were done?
I am sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't view quite fast enough, sorry.
Just one quick question. Is it possible for them to go for sketch plan and final site plan at the same time if they bring in completely developed site plans?
I will have to take a look at that honestly and check for you.
Okay. That's something that we'll probably want to find out in case they need to, to go that route.
Okay, yep, we can, we can definitely look at that.
Thank you.
All right, again, as I said, obviously, this isn't something to be voted on. Your input's been great. I appreciate it. It's just what I needed. We will bring this back either as a sketch or final site plan approval hopefully as soon as we can, and see where we go from there.
Great.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Trying to visualize four of these on the G and E. All right. One point two, one point five. We're splitting hairs.
Thank you, Dean.
I haven't heard your tummy growl, so I hope you wait.
I ate before this meeting.
I didn't, and I can smell the fire department.
Good thing.
Did you smell that?
You probably can. Okay. Any, any public comments that we'd like to hear? I can see that.
That's not the standard.
Yeah. Okay, uh, no other business. You know what? Oh, yeah. All right, John. That's the best thing you said on.